It is six thirty five on Monday, February twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Okay, uh, we have a fairly light agenda, uh, tonight, so, um, we're gonna start with our consent agenda, which includes our minutes from February eleventh. We have two warrants, uh, fifty and fifty one, uh, and, uh, computer donations. I checked yesterday and there was nothing on computer donations, uh, can we just have some?
David doesn't have me put anything in there because of this.
Mm-hmm. What is it?
So, we have to be very careful on who, um, on publishing where the donations come from?
No, we never did, I, we don't know what donation, what is being donated.
So, just computers that David usually gets, so let, let, we'll let David speak to that, yeah.
There it is.
We, we, from one of the, uh, organizations that donates, um, regularly to us, you know, two or three times a year, they gave us thirty eight Hewlett Packard laptops, um, that, um, are a model that will run Windows ten, which we desperately need for the high school for next year. So, that was the current donation that's on tonight's agenda. And from, uh, a sister agency of that organization, um, I'm expecting, um, another sizable amount, which I know you can't board on tonight 'cause they're not here yet, we don't know when they're coming, but, um, that first one, just looking at that, it's on its, uh, on its way. So, basically, we're continuing what I've been doing for quite some years, which is a practice that was established many years ago at the school committee, was that there are certain organizations that I work with that reach out to me when they have surplus equipment, they run the inventory by me to see if any of it, or all of it, or some of it, is gonna be helpful, and almost all the time it is. And then I, um, work with them to get the inventory here. And then, once it gets here, um, I send the superintendent, um, an inventory sheet for you to, um, approve and settle.
Yep, and, uh, we appreciate it. I'm well aware of all the great things, you know, that you've been doing and all the donations, but just purely donations instead of that, if there was some quantity and some explanation, that's what I was asking, otherwise, uh, thank you for it.
Okay, so, I mean, future, I'll make sure I put the, 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 the amount on it.
Yep, that would be great.
Here was, it was thirty eight UNs, uh, that came in Hewlett Packard laptops with docking stations.
Awesome, thank you, it's great to hear. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any, uh, comment, edit, questions on any one of these items? Okay, hearing none, all in favor to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, no visitors this evening, we have nothing under new business, uh, or old business. Uh, we have to begin the process for our superintendents evaluation. Does this mean next time, or does it mean a little later down the road?
Just to, just a little later down the road?
Okay. All right.
But, just to get it on the radar screen.
Cool. So, we, uh, just a quick note on that one, I know that there's a process that the state established, and, uh, so long as we follow that, I think we have some ability to have better conversations than what that template is allowing us to have.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we had, uh, discussed before, so, uh, you know, if we can prepare for it, then, you know, have something that is a little more meaningful in terms of, uh, you know, what we're, what we're saying, what we're hearing, and the goals that we are setting, that would be awesome. And this is not just for you, it's primarily for us, anyway.
It's interesting you say that, there was actually an email that came out, um, I think from DESI requesting, um, if districts were using different types of superintendent evaluation tools.
Okay.
Um, so I think that the state is actually hearing that it's not as useful as a tool, um, and doesn't give the great feedback that we're looking for, for improvement, so.
Well, that's good, that's good enough.
So, if we come up with one, we can send it down.
Yeah.
So, are you thinking that you're going to formulate goals and then bring it to us, or are you thinking, uh?
Generally, that's how it, yeah.
Well, I know that's generally how it works, but based on some of the discussions that we've had, it's, the way it's come to us in the past was that it was basically a completed document and we kinda just signed off on it. But we're saying that it, we would like it more to be a discussion, so that it's agreed upon goals, and so that's your understanding too, right?
Yes.
So, it's more of a template, maybe, uh, brainstorming on your part? That's what I'm thinking, anyway, uh, not putting too much time and effort on her part, but bringing more of a template to, to, uh, a meeting, so that we can all discuss?
Yeah. Yeah, but Cheryl's part will be to bring those, those goals to us.
Yes.
But after that, I agree, yes.
Right, and if we wanna add or make changes, or?
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna really limit the administrative part and use that time instead for a better conversation around those. Great. All right, so moving on to, uh, the next item, which is related to our policies, the remaining policy section D E F. You had already made the updates that we had asked for, they, they, they've been complete for a while, but we're looking to add the last approved dates and references and make sure there isn't any loopholes.
Yes. Yep.
So, as I quickly went through those three, because they were not there last night, so I did not have much time, but I quickly went through to see if they were there.
Right.
It seems like they are, if anybody has any, uh, anything else that they have seen. If not, if you can, if anyone can make a motion to approve the policy sections D E F, that would be great.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Any comments, questions, edits, anything that you did not see that should've been there? Okay. Hearing none, um, all in favor to approve the policy sections D E F, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you for that, thank you to the, um, uh, policy subcommittee, uh, thank you for the work that, uh, you've done Cheryl to update these. So, I'm glad that we're done with so many sections now. What is remaining, do you know from the top of your head?
Just that one.
The top of my head is in budget, I, um, which had just recently been reviewed, but the committee has not reviewed it, uh, since.
Wasn't there the other one, J, J or something, there was?
J is a big one.
It was the one last.
J was the student's and it's like J and I are, yeah. Yeah. It's the big one, but it had just been done in two thousand and, it was reviewed in fifteen and approved in sixteen, I believe, so it wasn't, you know.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and it has been updated as, uh, MASC has released, um, policy updates, so.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, now moving on to our standing reports, starting with our superintendents report.
A little curve.
Wow, a little curve. Okay, so, um, I wanted to, uh, spend a little bit of time with our Granby Junior High School sports, uh, tonight. Uh, they have not quite wrapped up their, um, winter season, uh, but we wanna say congratulations to all of the teams, uh, especially boys basketball, who've qualified for the Division Four tournament, and they're actually playing tonight, so if we got out a little early, we might be able to run down and catch some of that, if the wind doesn't blow the power out. Um, girls basketball qualified for Division Three tournament, they play Wacona on Friday, at Wacona. Uh, congratulations to Nora Young this year, who scored her one thousandth point, uh, in basketball. And congratulations to Emmett Seabird, Chris Perez, Joey Deprey, all qualified for the state wrestling championship. And Jenna Learned qualified and participated in the girls' all-state wrestling tournament for Granby. So, that is an impressive bunch of student athletes. Um, I did also wanna say thank you to all our staff, coaches, parents, and families that support the hard work of our student athletes, um, oop, and that's it.
Great. And congratulations to, aside from the individual successes, congratulations to all, to all of the, uh, teams for, again, having a great year.
Oh, I know what is missing, I, so there's a little piece of that that's missing, in the bottom right-hand corner, um, is a picture of our four, uh, female student athletes who represented Granby at Women's Sports Day on the hill, um, and so, uh, that is, uh, what I had left off, so I will fix that before I post.
What's the picture of, it looks like the coach with the cake?
That's what I'm making.
I can't read what it says, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's basketball.
Twentieth season of coaching, I think it says on there.
Oh, okay. He's been at Granby Club for twenty years?
Yep.
Wow.
Cool, anything else, Cheryl?
That's it, that's all I have.
Great.
That's awesome.
All right, moving on to, um, Adam's report on business office and facilities.
Yep, so I'll be, um, try to be quick, um, FY twenty, we're gonna get into in a few minutes. Chartwells, um, we will be, uh, they'll be here in our next meeting, March eleventh, to give us an, uh, kinda year-to-date review and, um, synopsis of what's been going on with them. Um, FY nineteen, I will also give FY nineteen updates next meeting, as, uh, we've been working on the FY twenty budget and presentation for tonight's meeting. Facilities, finally, we had a walkthrough for the roof last Wednesday, I believe it was, here at the high school. Um, we had about seven or eight, uh, contractors come, uh, we walked, uh, through the school upstairs, and then, um, they went on the roof with John Sullivan and checked out everything that was up there. Unfortunately, at that point, there was a couple inches of snow up there, so I'm not sure what, um, if anything, they could see. Um, but we kinda convened afterwards, they had some generic, uh, questions, um, and they all seemed interested in, uh, submitting an RFP, which were due today at one o'clock, so I'm not sure how that process went. Um, but there is a committee that, um, the treasurer, Steve Nally's on, um, selectman Glenn Sexton, and the principal here, Steve Sullivan, are on that committee. And I believe they've all been sworn in, and I believe they'll have their first meeting, it might've been today, after the RFP openings, and they'll, you know, provide us updates as they, um, as they go along.
That's great to hear. So, the RFP is coming up still, right?
So, this, the RFP, so they were due today for the design services of, of, uh, of the project.
Oh, okay.
So then, once that's picked out, then they'll, they'll be able to iron out with, uh, you know, whoever they select, everything else.
Aye.
Um, again, I know the committee had opened those today, I'm not sure if they met or did anything after that, so we'll, we'll see.
Sounds great, thank you for that.
Yes.
Okay, so, still yours.
What else I have?
Do you have the, uh, budget stuff?
Oh, oh, okay, I didn't know, yeah, for FY twenty, I didn't know if we were going through the rest of our stuff, or we're going right into that presentation? Oh, sure, yeah. That's four curveballs today.
Ooh, curveballs, that's the wind.
Yeah.
So, uh, do you have the, uh, Granby Public Schools presentation in front of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone has it open, okay.
All right, um, so, uh, what we're gonna do tonight is, uh, quickly review the strategic plan, uh, the FY twenty budget calendar, where we want to go with this budget, and review our requests, um, go over a bit of savings and efficiencies, and our key dates. Uh, so I have for you on your table, uh, the strategic plan, just to remind you and the community, we have four goals in the strategic plan. One is to offer innovative and continuous learning experiences, uh, two is to celebrate successes and engage, uh, community, three is to focus on social, emotional, and physical well-being, and four is to, uh, provide proper resources to sustain best possible learning environment. So, those are our four goals, so this year, we took a little bit of a different approach, um, in thinking about our budget. But before we get there, I wanted to just go over the calendar with you and, uh, note that we are February twenty-fifth. Um, we are preventing, presenting, uh, an overview of our budget requests tonight. Uh, we have a joint finance and select board meeting, uh, with some members, but not all, tomorrow, uh, Tuesday.
So, it may have to be full quorum, but, uh, we're, I, I'm expecting that we will have, uh, folks coming in, which, you know, uh, this is the first meeting, uh, of a series, so we should be okay.
Okay, um, and then I wanted to, um, bring to the school committee's attention, March sixth, we would like to have a public forum to share, uh, the school department, uh, budget in a very, uh, thirty thousand foot view, um, and get input from the community on their thoughts around, uh, where they would like to see, uh, the school department go. Um, and then, uh, we added the April first budget hearing, so I wanted to make sure that the committee could, uh, definitely make the April first, uh, hearing, um, but also put the public forum, um, on the committee's radar as well.
Good.
That's a Wednesday, right, the, the sixth?
Yes.
Yes, I won't be able to attend that, but, uh.
I can't make it. And that's really just a conversation, so, I'm, I'm, that's fine, um, might almost be more, we wouldn't have to post it,
Yeah, it's, it's all good.
If we didn't have a quorum there, so we could just have a conversation.
So, for the April first public hearing, we have to post it somewhere in mid-March, right?
Yes. So, that's an indication to Kathy, because it has to be in the newspaper, and, uh, but I did wanna make sure that we got that on our calendars, um, if April first was good, for everybody.
Sounds good, is that, is that our meeting day?
Yeah, it's a Monday.
It's a Monday, but we have, we, we have April eighth.
We need the eighth, yeah.
Okay.
I'm available at the, and the sixth, I can do the sixth, too.
Oh, awesome.
Will the budget hearing be at regular time, six thirty, or what?
Yes.
Okay. How long do these usually go?
I mean, posted, I would say, yeah, for an hour or so.
Usually an hour. Yeah, we usually present the budget, do, that usually takes a half an hour or so, um, and then, there's usually some really good community questions, uh, and, uh, then we wrap up.
Okay.
Uh, is the Wednesday, March sixth meeting starting at six thirty as well? Okay. And where are they being held?
Uh, the forum I'd like to have here, um, and then, I see no reason not to have the, the, um, public hearing here as well. Um, I think the question is whether to have it here, or, uh, we've set up in the gym before, um.
Yeah.
Or even the cafeteria is nice in here, too.
Yeah, in a place where it feels a little more comfortable and, you know, a little more intimate, rather than a one-sided presentation with the, you know, bleachers and stuff, so.
Yeah.
That would be here, then?
I think here, I, I'm, we certainly have enough seats.
Yeah.
It's a nice space.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. And if we get overwhelmed, we can just shift to the cafeteria and let people know.
Yeah, we could do that.
So, we're good for the sixth and the first?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, where do we want to go with this budget? Um, we asked that question of the leadership team, uh, and, uh, what we came up with was, again, we'd like to maintain a level service budget, uh, which means continuing all of the programming that we currently have. Uh, we want to support a continuum of services programming for social, emotional learning, which include, um, implementing, uh, mindfulness training next year, and implementation of the social, emotional learning program at East Meadow. We are looking to upgrade technology at Granby Junior Senior High School, um, and under that, we are looking to create the one-to-one implementation for grades seven and eight, um, reminding the committee that the East Meadow students have had, uh, Chromebooks in a one-to-one environment in grades three through six, and that we would like to continue that, uh, work in grade seven and eight. Uh, we also need to sustain our next-generation computer-based MCAS testing capacity, and we would like to sustain the STEM coursework in both Project Lead the Way and Advanced Computer Science. Uh, we'd like to provide central office support for technology integration, um, and we do have Jeff's son, uh, coming to present the results of his work with us, so that's a little bit of a placeholder for us, um, and he will be coming to present to school committee as well, um, what his findings are. And we look to support curriculum development and implementation, uh, really in two key areas, uh, which the committee is aware of. We want to continue instructional leadership team training and support, and we want to continue the implementation of the assessment system. Um, right now, it's in K through six, rolling out, and we would like to extend that to seven and eight next year as well.
What, what does that N W E A stand for, again?
Northwest Education, uh, I think Alliance, but I would have to check, I so meant to go back and check.
Okay.
Um, it is, uh, one of the front-runner, um, assessment systems that really began to focus on student growth. It wasn't so much about grade level, but it was about understanding where individual students were performing in skillset and knowledge, uh, and giving teachers good information about that, so that they could make instructional decisions to move forward. Uh, and so, at the beginning, it was in the northwest part of the United States, really designed by teachers, uh, which, uh, I think shaped the development of the whole process, uh, both in how they ask questions, how they create questions, but then also how they share results with teachers and create their data and their data reporting.
So, would you like questions now, or would you like us to hold them until the end?
Um, I'll take them now.
Okay. Uh, as far as the high school goes, under the technology section, what is techno, the technology needs at the high school level, from, say, ninth through twelfth? How are they doing at the high school?
Excellent question, um, I would defer, at this point, to when we receive Jeff's son's report.
Okay.
Because he did focus groups with students, staff, he did a survey of parents, um, and he also worked with the leadership team. So, that work is going to shape, I think, our conversation and truly what the technology needs are, not only in the short term, um, because we cannot continue with donations, um, but the long term, what that could look like.
So, this is flexible, then?
Yes.
I mean, if he comes back and says, you know, there, there are significant needs at the high school level, okay.
Yes, yes.
And do you know when he's gonna be coming?
Um, he's presenting this week.
March eleventh.
I thought it was the eleventh, yeah.
Well, he.
Or he's coming to us.
He's presenting to the leadership team, because I just sent that request out, um.
When we had talked, if, I remember when we had talked to, to approve the funding for it, we had said that March eleventh, school committee meeting, correct?
Right.
Yes.
And the sixth, so he's coming to the leadership team on the sixth, uh, with the hope of being here on the eleventh.
Could be a busy agenda.
Yeah, it seems like, it seems like that's a priority, that him coming on the eleventh, pushing that off is not really an option.
That's a busy agenda. Yes. Yes.
No, and we actually, we kind of sped him up on his whole process as well, so.
Yeah, he, he kinda changed his calendar, compared to our, um, our urgency.
Yeah, yep, yep, our urgency. Yep.
Very good.
Yeah, so again, I would say that even the one-to-one implement, implementation, I mean, those are our hopes, I think, I think we're at a place where we need that, but again, this report could come back and say, hey, we're not at that place yet to even implement this, so, uh, at least this portion of the technology upgrade is, for lack of a better term, at his mercy right now, and so we, you know, we have his feedback and see, you know, see exactly what he found here.
Is the roof gonna stay on?
It's unnerving.
It is.
Yes.
It's the only kind of storm that makes me get a little nervous, it's wind, oh, I.
The, the assessments for nine through twelve, what is the timeline for that?
Yes. So, it's being implemented currently, oh, nine through twelve, I apologize, um, so, right now, we haven't had that discussion at leadership for nine through twelve.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, I think we, as, uh, the principals and staff, need to understand what the benefits would be for nine through twelve.
Okay.
Um, and we haven't, we've really focused on the elementary and then the middle school, and.
So, there's no requirement that it has to be across the board?
No.
Okay.
No.
Is, this is a system that your team, you and your team chose?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, uh, and it came out of, uh, multiple discussions at the school-based level with the instructional leadership team about what would they need and want as assessment and data, so that they could use that data really on the fly.
So, it's a district-wide assessment system, it's just that you're rolling it out?
Okay. Yep.
Gotcha.
Uh, may I, may I suggest, uh, something for, the item that says sustain STEM coursework? The second one, I think, is fairly self-explanatory, the computer science class, but the first one, I know, based on our conversations, encompasses a few different, uh, subjects. If we can highlight those, because this by itself doesn't necessarily mean.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. Agreed, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the, uh, overall plan?
Okay, so we did, um, on the next slide, put some numbers together for those requests, um, and, uh, the total of that request is two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. Um, but when we present next time, we're gonna talk a little bit more.
Something just broke.
And in a little bit more detail about how we anticipate using current funding, um, additional funding, and other revenue to support these requests. So, I don't want anyone to think that we're asking for two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars over what we asked for last year, but we're gonna get into that kind of detail and conversation at the next, uh, meeting. We really wanted to make sure that what we presented in terms of our asks met the goals of the committee.
So, is it fair to say that these are the items that align with our strategic plan, and this is just costing of those specific, uh, elements
Yes. Yes. Exactly.
that correspond to the strategic plan-related items?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the most important point of, I would say, not just the slide, of the whole process, but this slide was just to, to, um, show the tie between what the ask is and then how it ties to the strategic plan.
But the overall magnitude of our budget is still, you're still working on.
Yes, correct, yes, yep, yep.
And I also assume that because the strategic plan is a three-to-five-year plan, that you're keeping that in mind as you're doing, you know, you're thinking out three to five years, and you're planning for, okay, well, this probably won't happen this year, it might happen in year two, or year three, or.
Yes.
And one good example is, but, again, it goes back to technology, but the implementation of one-to-one, in three to five years, we would hope that, ideally, the full seventh through twelfth would be one-to-one. Obviously, you can't roll that out all at once, so, yes, that, that would be something that we're, we're, we have to start now and look out three to five years to, to complete that.
And, and will the full committee get a looksee of the?
Said see, budget see, yes.
Next time, yes.
I mean, the whole three-to-five-year.
Oh, the three or five.
You know, the bird's-eye view of, of the strategic plan.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not saying at the next meeting, or the next two meetings, you know, once you get through the budget season, it would be nice to just see what your vision is.
Yeah, certainly, yep. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I may have missed it, but, um, the part there with the one FTE, special education, adjustment counselor, that's all that stuff we voted on last time, right?
Yes.
Yep.
We just wanna make sure that, um, we understand that that has to get built into this next budget, FY twenty, as an ask. I mean, it's already been voted and approved, but we do have to find a way to fund that, uh, for FY twenty and forward.
And then the last item, the, have that mindfulness training, is that? What part was that, that, uh, that's the part I always get confused with?
So, that's gonna move from the pilot at the elementary to district-wide, so that would, um, when you talk about timeline, that would get us district-wide implementation and training next year, um, with some embedded coaches trained, so that by the following year, we would be reducing the reliance on, um.
Consulting.
On consulting, and really developing that, um, that space for ourselves, so.
So, that's really the final piece, per se, in that, of that, of that?
Yep. Well, I wouldn't say final, I would say we're probably gonna need more consulting that, um, as we roll out that third year, the district-wide, um, but beyond that, it would, it would most likely be, uh, uh, where we have coaches, um, that are doing the training and, and providing the support to staff.
So, the third year was, at least the plan was, that the third year was gonna include train-to-trainer.
Yes, that would be the major focus of that, yeah.
Uh, module, so, yeah, so after that, it's, it's a self, self-reliant. So after that, it's a self-reliant, self-sustaining program.
So that's kinda good news. We were thinking it was gonna be a little bit longer than that. I thought that it was gonna take longer to get through.
Honestly, I thought so too, but it, it has been well-received. It's been implemented in classrooms. Students are well, they're very excited about it. So that's generating a lot of enthusiasm.
So, thank you for that. Just to remind us about that section. So one more suggestion related to that social emotional learning-related section. Based on Carol's presentation last time, there's a cost avoidance piece to that, that-
Yes, we talked about that.
Yes.
Yes, yep.
That, that detail-
Yes, we would have a larger-
That detail is important.
Yes. And so then, any other questions on, I should not gloss over the celebrate success and engage community. We do have a line there for twenty thousand to really focus some resources on building our capacity to really communicate, and quite frankly, brand. We've talked about it for a couple of years. There are some services that we can use to build apps or to manage website or even look at stipends for teachers to lead courses. And I think that, again, Jeff's son's report will help us sort of navigate some of that. So I'm sort of hopeful that there'll be feedback in there. But I did wanna make sure that, that we do commit resources to that goal. Otherwise, unfortunately, I think it would, it would get bumped off the to-do list.
Agreed.
Is that, is that resource-related or combination of resources? Combination of materials plus service?
Yeah, it could be a combination, service, staff, and resources, yeah. Yep. Any other questions on that? Okay. So savings and efficiencies. We do have increased enrollment, which does bring us increased revenue on the net school spending side. We have had salary savings through attrition and the new salary schedule. We've reduced special education tuition due to age outs. We do have some facility savings that we're hopeful will pan out as long as the wind doesn't take any roof off or anything. I shouldn't even joke about that. That was bad. That's bad karma. Not gonna let you do whatever you have to do. That was bad. We are looking to have, to effectively use our grants and other revenue reimbursements, our entitlement grants, circuit breaker, and school choice. That has been an issue for us in the past. So with the addition of Adam, and I have to say, say thank you to Nancy Jalavet, who really does try to make sure that we're spending every penny of every grant in the grant year. We've gotten much better, and I think that will reflect in the overall budget once it's presented. So our key dates coming up, we have the February twenty-sixth meeting, a joint meeting with the committee, finance, and select board. Bless you. Bless you.
There might be one more.
Thank you, the March sixth public forum. So we will put that out via Connect Ed hopefully tomorrow. And March twenty-fifth will be our meeting to vote to approve the budget. We'll present the budget on the eleventh. And then if we can have, I'm sure, lots of conversation about that, but it would allow us time to revise and present the revised budget for approval on the twenty-fifth and April first public hearing.
Here's, so March twenty-fifth is when we approve the budget. And if nothing dramatic changes, that's the version that would go to the town?
Yes.
So here's what I'm thinking. When there is a public hearing, typically the intent of the public hearing is to let everybody hear it and then, you know, provide some feedback. Granted, there is a good reason behind every line item it seems, whether it relates to the strategic, strategic plan or it's related to the overall need of the school district, including, you know, salaries and everything else. So it's well-planned and put together. My thought is, it may be good practice to just make sure that everybody feels included in the process before the final version is voted upon. So do the public hearing before we say final. In fact, I think in past years, we had the public hearing, and right after the public hearing, we voted to approve it. Can we do that? Maybe, you know, push it one more week from the twenty-fifth? Or if you wanna do the public hearing on the twenty-fifth, whatever the committee feels is best. But let's just, my suggestion would be let's do it in that order so that-
Sure. So you would rather have school committee finalize FY twenty budget for public hearing, have the public hearing, and then vote the-
To approve it.
Approve. So I'd just like to check with Chris Martin to make sure that that timeline works for when he needs to produce the warrant articles, so.
Okay. I mean, again, just the, one option could be we just move the public hearing to March twenty-fifth. We still have time for that. And we vote on-
The first?
On that same, on the first or the same day. You know, as long as we have enough time to digest what's in there, it would be great to be able to have that conversation before we approve it and then tell folks that this is what we approved.
Okay.
You know, that, that's, you know, that, that, hopefully, that would be part of our transparent approach to budgeting.
Yep, okay. I'm good with that. So we're gonna make the public hearing on March twenty-fifth?
It's already a regularly scheduled-
School committee meeting, yeah. So we have to advertise probably like this week?
Yeah.
We have to advertise this week? Is it ten days?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So we have, we have plenty of time, okay. Yep.
Great, thank you.
So we can take the first off then, because we're gonna adjust it?
Yep.
Any other questions?
So the, so the savings and efficiencies. Is there a way we can see some dollar amounts?
Yes, so, yes, that is the next presentation.
Sorry, it just makes it easier to visualize?
Yeah, this was sort of like the thirty-thousand-foot, like, for those of you who are linguists, the story. And then we're gonna give the numbers with much more detail. But I would caution that they are the governor's numbers. And we're, so, we are still waiting on in-kind numbers, which is normal. So as soon as we get those, those would be worked in. But there, there are some subtle changes that happened through the spring, and I don't wanna lose sight of that. So they can change anywhere from twenty thousand to fifty thousand to a hundred thousand based on what the state provides. So just have to keep that in mind.
But some of these, I think, start to show the good story of how we're-
Yes.
I think that's trying to be prudent with the funds we have, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think we have an opportunity, but also probably almost an obligation to continue to communicate with our elected officials because typically, the legisla- legislature-approved budget is better than what the governor proposes. So let's just make sure that it's still, it's still that way. Cool. Any other questions?
I would say just along those lines, and I just shared this with Cheryl at our next Masbo special meeting, Governor Baker will be the guest speaker. So there is guest registration available, although right now, that is closed, and they're letting just members of Masbo register first before they know how many seats there are, and then they will open up guest registration. So when that happens, I will forward it to the committee, and anybody would be welcome to attend that.
Is there a question-and-answer opportunity?
So I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't, yes, I don't, I think it, I don't know what the presentation will be. I'm just assuming he is going to give us some overview on what the budget process was. If there's a question and answer, I, I don't know.
One, one, one.
Yes.
Or we can give you our questions.
I know, that's what I was thinking.
Yes, yes.
I mean, but I could see where, or may not, that might not be the case.
Along those lines, we are meeting the superintendent roundtable with our legislators on Friday at the log cabin, and you are all invited. It is a twelve-thirty meeting, so I know that's very difficult for folks. But I did wanna extend the invitation. It is our legislative advocacy meeting. You are all wonderful advocates. So if you could let me know if you'd like to go, I can certainly reserve spots for you.
Is it this coming Friday?
It's this coming Friday at twelve-thirty.
Thank you. All right, anything else on your side? Okay, we're gonna have Chart Wells next time?
We're gonna have Chart Wells next time, yep, yep.
All right, that's cool. Anything, I mean, I know you shared, but was there anything that was shared with you that-
With Chart, for Chart Wells? So I haven't met with them yet to, to kind of get in detail of what they wanna present next meeting, only because we've been working on this presentation. But I will now that this part of the presentation's over. So I will have, I will make sure I get that stuff in the folder, maybe even before that Thursday. Just, if you guys have any questions, I can, I can follow up with them.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Thank you for that.
I would, before we move on, I would like to thank the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Obviously, they've been a huge help in this process. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I think we've had some really, really good conversations. And I think we have a few more meetings left, and I think those are where we're gonna get into some details and some tough decisions. But to this point, we've had some great conversations, and it's been a really, been really good meetings to this point. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on to our remaining standing reports, anything from the collaborative? No. Building Committee did not meet since our last meeting. Policy Subcommittee, do you have anything?
Our work has finished.
Until, unless, until we tackle that big one, the remaining big one.
I think my goal is to get the new in Kathy's hands and then upload it to the website and then take a look at the remainder. So maybe one more meeting.
One more.
All right. Budgets upcoming? No, I don't think we do. Community relations?
Ooh, update.
I think that's all we have for our regular session. We have an executive session. So for that, we're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Part eighty-three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so in an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can you help us with our roll call, Kathy?
Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, and have a good evening.